Okay, having a quorum, I'd like to open the Planning Commission meeting for March 4th, 2010. We had a long lunch presentation, so we're getting a bit of a late start. But luckily, we have one agenda meeting today, so that helps. Ms. Rodriguez, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Jacobs?
Here.
Commissioner Justice?
Absent.
Chair Bartlet?
Here. Okay, for preliminary matters, we do need to review our minutes for our last two meetings. Hopefully, this will be brief, since they are action minutes. Are there comments from the Commission on the minutes for February 11th, 2010?
Just briefly, Mr. Chair, I will be abstaining from the minutes of February 18th, as I was absent on that day.
Okay. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I've finally started reading these, and I know they're action minutes, but in particular, the discussion on the redevelopment agency, I was just a little taken back that the highlight point on the action minutes made mention of the police station project, whereas my recollection was that several of us talked about carving out, looking into carving out additional opportunities within the RDA as it exists and starting a new RDA. And in particular, we looked at the equivalent of the funk zone for greater attention. So I just wanted to make sure that those were still a part of the record.
Great. I appreciate those comments. I had some more. Ms. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the minutes of February 11th, on the first page, on the front, it says Chair Bartlet called the meeting to order, and the roll call was Chair Stella Larson and Vice Chair Addison. So it's a small change in template. Thanks.
Great. Ms. Schwartz, nothing? Ms. Jacobs, do you have another comment here?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bartlet. Again, on the bottom of Page 2, where the one paragraph summarizes our discussion, I would ask if we could include in that last, as part of the last sentence, that suggestions for extending the life of the agency, and then Mr. Jordan's comment, or creating new agencies, and subsequent, and then that could be one sentence, and then also it could be that the existing RDA was encouraged to redevelop the city's police station before the RDA expires in 2015, to separate out those different concepts.
Great, thank you. And then I think part of the other discussion that we had on the RDA item was the consideration of perhaps a citywide zone, even though it would be somewhat different than the current focused RDA, that there was another vehicle out there that could be utilized. So we probably need to go back and listen to the tape and get something into that effect. I think that was one of the other available options, and then the focused new RDA down near the funk zone, or somewhere in that general vicinity. Okay, and now the minutes of February 18th. Ms. Larson?
I'll be abstaining from those due to absence.
Thank you. Others? I will be abstaining from Item 3B on that one as well. Any other comments? Okay, do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of February 11th and February 18th?
Still moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Minutes are approved. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Cotto, are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items?
No, thank you.
About announcements and appeals? No, nothing new. Great. And at this point, I will open public comment. Now, this is for items that are not on today's agenda. If there's anybody wishing to speak on any other item, now would be the time. Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. We'll go to our first item, which is Item 3, which is the presentation of the Galleta Slough Reserve Restoration Project. And I believe Andrew Vermont is going to do the presentation on that.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bartlet and Planning Commissioners. The proposed project is the tidal restoration in the Galleta Slough Basin EF, which is located between Tecletito Creek and the main instrument runway on airport property. The project would consist of 9.3 acres seasonal wetland being converted to a tidal wetland, and would incorporate the portion of the tidal demonstration project that was tidal, so that it will flood and drain with the tides rather than flooding during winter rains and drying out over the course of spring and summer. The slough area was historically tidal, but was converted to seasonal wetlands through berms installed by the Army Corps of Engineers in the 1940s. And over the course of several decades, those basins have accumulated sediment and are now actually posing a flood problem. In 2006, the airport began construction of the airfield safety projects, which consisted of the relocation of the main instrument runway and the relocation of Tecletito Creek to accommodate that. It also involved all those restoration sites there in pastel colors. They totaled 30 acres, which left 9.3 acres to be installed. That last 9.3 was deferred to the results of the tidal demonstration project, which is a three-year study that we saw on the site visit on Tuesday, of the feasibility of tidal restoration near a runway. And the study concluded that not only would it not present a hazard to aviation, but it would actually reduce the incidence of birds overrunning the runway and causing a potential hazard. So here's the existing site, and I've highlighted a theoretical five-foot high tide in blue, and show the area that would be inundated at a high tide. And then the proposed project would expand that throughout the basin. Obviously, in a higher tide or in a storm event, it would flood further. That area in sort of dots is the six-to-seven-foot elevation, which has been identified as ideal for the state-listed building Savannah Sparrow, and so that's why that is as large as it is. The project was reviewed under CEQA, and a mitigated negative declaration was prepared. It's a public comment period, and we identified three areas with significant but avoidable impacts. The mitigation measures that were incorporated limit construction just to the dry season to reduce the potential for problems with water resources or endangered tidewater goby. We will also be monitoring during that construction period. There's also a seven-year monitoring and reporting program, monitoring, reporting, and maintenance program, as required by the LCP. And prior to the draining of Tecletito Creek in the area where construction will occur, there will be fish relocation to move them out. I just wanted to include a picture of what that looks like, fish relocation. So the MND concluded that there will be no significant impacts with mitigation incorporated, and those mitigations are included in the recommended conditions of approval. I wanted to talk a little bit about the GSR zone, because it is slightly different from the other zones at the airport. Title 29 requires the issuance of a Galleta Slough coastal development permit rather than a regular CDP. That's limited to habitat restoration and vital aviation projects, and the projects in the original jurisdiction of the coastal zone, which means they will be making, they will be issuing the permit. In addition to the Coastal Commission, there are two other state agencies that will be reviewing this, as well as what we're doing today at the city, and three federal agencies will be reviewing the project. So there are a number of agencies watching out for the various resources that are their charge. The project is funded through the FAA Airport Improvement Program grant. However, the maintenance and monitoring, the seven-year period that I discussed earlier, will be paid for from airport department funds, and that would be approximately $90,000 per year, but it will reduce over time as maintenance needs go down. So based on all the previous, staff's recommendation is that you adopt the findings listed on Pages 8 through 10 of the staff report, to adopt the mitigated negative declaration, and recommend Coastal Commission the approval of a Galleta Slough coastal development permit.
Great. Thank you, Andrew. Are there any quick questions prior to going to public comment? Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had the pleasure of being on Creeks Advisory Committee when the larger project was done, 2006. I couldn't have remembered that date and toured it. I'm just wondering if in that project and the relocation of the creek at that time, and I'm certain there's probably a restoration and maintenance period of times that's still ongoing with that, if there's any observations or items of interest that you learned that are worth sharing as you're getting ready to start this project?
Yes, Commissioner Jordan. The, one example is that we had a lot of denuded berms right at the beginning. After we'd planted, there were a lot of open areas, and we would have flocks of killdeer that would nest there. And it was causing a significant problem, because we would have kites and hawks that would regularly prey upon them directly overhead, and that was under the approach. And you know, a kite can hover right in the main overrun of the runway. So this will incorporate bird netting. That'll be a sort of a net that is about a foot or so above ground for probably about six months following construction, and then that will be taken out to prevent that sort of thing from happening.
Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Page 10, with the number 13 of the findings, the last full line, it says, "And other interested parties to view and study the Galleta Slough's tidal prism." Is that a term of art that I'm, could you explain that to me, please?
Yes, Commissioner Lodge. The tidal prism is essentially the various elevations at which the tide can flow into, and it is sort of a term of art of hydrology. But you know, if a tidal prism goes to five feet, as I've shown there, you have a certain area that will inundate, and then lower, sort of, if you think of an inverted triangle, you know, as you go down, smaller area would be inundated. And that's really what that refers to, is tidal influence or tidal flows would, could be used interchangeably there.
Great. Thanks for the clarification. Ms. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering if Exhibit A, which are the conditions of approval, and Exhibit F, which are also a set of commissions, conditions of approval, are they the same thing? I didn't take the time to totally go over them word by word, but they appear to be.
Commissioner Larson, they should be, yes. The intent of attaching them to the MND was to ensure that they would make it into the record of the Coastal Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Chair Bartlet. Couple of questions, Mr. Vermont, and thank you so much again for that very informative tour we had earlier this week. Does the airport have the maintenance funds to support the $90,000 per year? I think you had mentioned to me that it would be over a seven-year period. Is that right?
Commissioner Schwartz, that's correct. The funds do not exist in the airport department currently. However, it is budgeted for, you know, beginning in, I guess it would be 2011 would be when that, when that would start. Additionally, the other, we have seven-year restoration requirement on all of the mitigation that's going on in the slough, and as those expire and as those continue to meet their permit criteria, the expenditures on them decrease significantly. And so we're actually looking at, for the Creeks and Berms and Area I, those other pastel areas I've shown on that earlier slide, those should reduce by about an order of half. And so that more than covers the $90,000 for the first year.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then of our endangered species out in this area, and I'm sorry, I don't recall from the packet that we received, are any of the large flocking birds on that endangered species, and if so, what will our obligations be to mitigate any adverse effect on them as we move forward with the construction?
We don't have any endangered migratory birds. However, migratory birds are protected under the Migratory Bird Treaty. And construction would not be able to occur if they were nesting in that area. That's why we have the monitor there to restrict that, as well as the timing of it during the, during the summer and early fall, when the seasonal wetlands are all dry. They generally do not attract geese or any migratory fowl.
Thank you.
Great. And then I have one quick question as we look forward to the future. Are there any additional tidal basin restoration projects that may have been linked with the airline terminal project, or is this sort of the last of the restorations that you see on the horizon?
Chair Bartlet, the, this is the last associated with the airfield safety projects. There isn't a mitigation, a habitat mitigation requirement for the terminal. There are areas that have the potential to be restored in the future, should the opportunity do so arise, but we don't have any plans to do that.
Great. Well, thank you for that.
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to open public comment. We do have one public speaker. She's been patiently waiting. This will be Mavis Thibodeau, if you'd like to come forward, please.
Yes, thank you. This is Mavis Thibodeau, and I just want to address your chair and commissioners, and I'm an ambassador, a new airport ambassador out of the airport. So I wanted to just come find out a little more about this particular project, because believe it or not, they ask more than where's the snack and where's the bathroom.
Right.
Your question, which you asked in the last, about if this is one of the last of the project in particular, is something that I wanted to know. And we're having a meeting either the 24th or 25th, and I think Anthony's going to come, and David's going to lighten everybody else. But I just want to commend all of you, and thank you so much for what you're doing with this project.
Great.
I'm very grateful.
Well, we appreciate meeting you and your persistence in waiting for our delayed start here today. So thank you for coming. Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the Commission for any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Certainly, there's a continuation of a required mitigation. It seems to have been all well thought out, and as if the airport is on top of the things that need to be done. And so I would move to approve the project and make the findings that are required.
Okay. Well, when the time is appropriate, I'll let you make the motion. Ms. Jacobs, I believe you're next.
Along the same lines as Ms. Lodge, when the, I find no objections to this. The report was excellent, Mr. Vermont. Thank you so much for a very good report and clear presentation. And when the time comes to support the motion for approving the mitigated negative declaration and for recommending the Galleta Slough coastal development permit, I'll be happy to second Ms. Lodge's motion.
Great. Well, now that we have that cleared up, okay, Ms. Larson?
Thank you very much. I'm really grateful that there's enough money to do this and that we get to do it. And the sensitivity to habitat that we're so aware of is so carefully observed, and the monitoring so great. And bird strikes certainly is an aviation problem. And the fact that this, this is a wonderful revegetating project, along with supporting public safety, is a terrific, it's a terrific solution. So I think it's great that it's going forward, and I'm looking forward to it. And that makes that view from the alumni building at UCSB really stunning. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Chair Bartlet. Mr. Vermont, first, this exhaustive study is exhausting, but besides that, it's just so informative and educational. And it left me feeling so proud of our community and that we're able to balance, in our planning and in design, a combination of aviation safety with biological and ecological restoration and support. So I certainly hope we're best practice. It feels like that to me. And I'm looking forward to following the progress and looking forward to the Coastal Commission's support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Likewise, I think there've been a lot of good comments. It's a, it's a great report, but I think I appreciated the site trip more than anything else, and I think you did a great job with that. And what I found interesting in reading the report is that there, there is an educational aspect to this, and I know it's restricted area because it's on the airport, but I do hope that as many people as can partake in this educational experience, I think it would be great for the community. I think it's the first time most of us have ever had a chance to be out there, and I think others would appreciate all the hard work and the approvals that are necessary to make this go forward. So thank you for the persistence, and we hope to maybe see it after this has, you know, been underway. And obviously, it'll be several years before it's fully reestablished. And the other thing that I do appreciate about the plan, it's the first time I've really seen grading plans coming from a civil engineer that don't look engineered. I mean, it looks very natural when you look at the contours and the shapes, and so that's very appreciated, and I, hopefully, the end result will reflect what we're seeing here on paper. So thank you for your efforts, and I will bring it back to Ms. Lodge to make her motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Move to approve the project, the Galleta Slough coastal, the permit for the Galleta Slough coastal development project, and to approve the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the project and make the findings.
Chair Bartlet, if I can interrupt, you'll be making a recommendation to Coastal Commission to approve, not approving a coastal, Galleta Slough.
Okay, make the recommendation to the Coastal Commission to approve the permit.
I'll second Ms. Lodge's motion.
Just under discussion, do we need a separate motion to make a recommendation for the Galleta Slough permit, or is that enclosed in this? It's covered all?
You can make one motion to recommend and approve the MND.
Okay.
Mr. Jordan, under discussion?
Thank you. I'd given up on you. I was gonna just go right ahead. I just, you know, nothing, nothing new to chime in, but my recollection, and I'm sure is still true, in 2006, that that airport project of which this tails on was the single largest restoration project in a watershed in the city of Santa Barbara. And Creeks was pretty actively involved at that time. And I echo again the comments I heard on the education, and Commissioner Lodge is chasing down that word prism, because one of the frustrating parts about a project such as this, it is not readily accessible without authorization. And I know that there's a Creeks division that would work tirelessly to help you overcome those security issues, or airport security issues, to get groups in there, but I know also that it's a logistical nightmare, and it's just part of the world we live in, that such a great project isn't wide open, such as, you know, the base of Las Pecitas at the restoration project there. So again, I just commend you on that and encourage you again to work with someone on those opportunities for outreach and education.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, I call a question. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for a great job on that. With that, we will move on to our administrative agenda. Are there any committee or liaison reports since we last met? Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Chair Bartlet. Last week, I had the pleasure of attending my first Transportation and Circulation Committee meeting. And in addition to John Owasiak's presentation to that committee, which was identical to the one that he provided us, so I won't touch on any of that, since it's duplicative, there was also a very enlightening presentation by MTD. And some of the information about MTD, here again, I'll just underscore how admiring and how proud I am of what we have accomplished in the way of public transportation here in Santa Barbara. Perhaps all of you know this, but let me just say, we have the largest electric fleet and the longest established in the nation, which I think we should really hold up as best practice, and I know they're going to continue to work in that direction. We also now are using biodiesel fuel in every MTD bus, and I think that's tremendous progress itself. There continue to be challenges with some of the routes in terms of ensuring that they're calibrating enough buses, the right routes at the right times, but it sounds to me like they're continuing to monitor and adjust that. And their overall financial presentation appeared to give the impression that they are fiscally very sound in managing their revenues to expenses very closely. So I heard appreciation from all the committee members on that note.
Great. Well, thank you for stepping up, and I know that's a very interesting committee, and we do appreciate the feedback, so. Any other liaison reports? Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I went to my first airport commission gathering, and this was a little different. It was a special meeting, and that began with a tour of the consolidated rental car, Quick Turnaround Facility, located at 25 David Love Place. That's at the railroad end of David Love. And it's quite a facility with four repair bays, four fueling positions, car wash, two car wash facilities, and a big solar array on top of a, it looks like, well, it might have been constructed for shade for the cars that are in storage, but it really, I believe, was constructed to hold the solar panels. And there are solar panels on the building itself, where the offices and the repair bays are located. I'm glad Mr. Vermont is here. He can correct me if I got this, get this wrong. My recollection is that all the solar work cost 1.3 million. There will be a rebate from Southern California Edison for over $600,000 on that, but it's still going to take about 20 years to get a payback on that, to get it paid off. So that was, that was very interesting. I'm glad I had a chance to see that, and somebody said it's probably the nicest-looking facility that nobody will ever see.
And it's fully operational at this point?
Yes, yes. Yeah. I also went yesterday for the first time. I'm alternate to the Landmarks Commission, and Commissioner Larson, I don't know if you had a chance to watch the meeting?
Not yet.
Okay, well, you would have, you would have been very interested. And those of you who, well, Charmaine, you may have been around long enough, but this is for a return of 517 Chapala Street, which created a lot of fear when it came around the first time, completely blocking what loose views are left from Brinkerhoff, from the houses there. And the residents were there to express their objections. However, what happened is that in, it first came before HLC in 2005, five years ago. And there wasn't much discussion of the impact on Brinkerhoff. It came to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission approved it. It went back to HLC, and then ended up on appeal of what turned out to be an HLC denial. There was a lot of concern about size, bulk, scale, and just, they just weren't happy with this and its relationship to the Victorian building next door, and so on. So it was appealed to the denial, and the architect said that he asked for a denial, so that he could then appeal it to the city council, which he did, and the council upheld his appeal and sent it back to the HLC with some direction, including lowering the height of certain things and making sure that the deck, rooftop deck areas couldn't be seen. But there was very little, you could tell that the commission was still very concerned about this project and did not think it was appropriate, but there, it's been approved essentially by the city council, and so far, since this is two years, that council appeal was in March of 2008. So it's been two years since then, and I think the architect just wants to make sure he sort of holds his place in terms of processing. So I don't know, I guess I threw in a fair amount of editorial comment there.
Well, we appreciate the feedback, so. Hasn't gone away, in other words.
No, it has not gone away, and it's not ready, the architect, they did make some comments on it, but some of the things, well, no, I haven't done that yet. comments on it, but some of the things, well, no, I haven't done that yet. And no, I haven't figured this thing out yet. So it really wasn't ready for substantive approval.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. News from the Harbor Commission is a little example of unintended consequences. There's, as everybody knows, many departments in the city have been glad recipients of the federal funds to bolster the economy. And one of the unanticipated consequences of that, as the Harbor Commission, the Army Corps of Engineers dredging contract runs out this year, and they're starting to negotiate on the next three-year contract, is that the federal funds and dredging operations up and down the states in either freshwater or ocean water waterways have increased significantly with the influx of those funds. And of course, there's only so many dredging companies. And of course, the law of normal economics then has driven up the cost per dredging activity in what was traditionally a $2 to $2.5 million dredging project in our harbors anticipated to next year at this time be $3 or $3.5 million. And of course, where they're going to get those excess funds is of concern. And of such concern that apparently we're sending Mr. Bridley back to Washington, DC. In addition to being on our representatives here for the federal government, we apparently also have a process with the harbor that we actually go back and work with a lobbying firm to try and get our fair share. But it's kind of discouraging to know that, you know, things were made good for a while with the dollars, but one of the unintended consequences was inflation. So no good news there.
Well, I'd like to thank you for that report, but I don't appreciate the news. Now they need to dredge up the funding, don't they? And Ms. Larson, do you have an update for us on any of your liaison?
I'll just remind you that we're told there's no inflation. Anyway, my report is for the staff hearing officer, and there was one small modification granted that didn't have anything to do with affecting privacy or anything that would rise to our level of concern.
Great. Thank you very much. And I don't have any past reports, but I will be attending the ABR meeting this coming Monday. The Los Portales, the All Affordable Housing Authority project is going to be going before the ABR. So I'll be monitoring that and report back at the next meeting. With that, that concludes our administrative agenda. And I would like to announce that today is First Thursday, even though we're getting out early. We should come back downtown later. I know I will certainly be attending, there's an event at the Channing Peak Gallery at 6 o'clock, the Design Matters exhibit with all the AIA awards, along with four guest speakers talking about the projects. And that's at 6 o'clock. So that will be a good event, and as well as many others. So hopefully, everybody can partake. With that, the meeting is adjourned.